Good morning. Welcome to the Okaloosa County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, February 4th at 8:30 a.m. We'll begin this morning with an invocation led by Reverend Mike McVeigh. Before he comes up, I want to tell you that he has been the mascot and kind of inspiration behind Lower Hill School for the last 20 years. He's the pastor of First Baptist Lower Hill, but he also leads as Mr. Hobo, which brings around a code of morality to the students and really leads them in school spirit and the way they're to go as they grow up. So Pastor McVeigh, I'm grateful that you're here. If you would, can you lead us in the invocation? Following the invocation, we have the Pledge of Allegiance and the presentation of the colors by the Okaloosa County Emergency Medical Services. If you would, please stand with us.
Father, we love you and we thank you this morning for this opportunity. God, I thank you for the privilege and honor of representing you and being here this morning with these men and women who have been elected to represent us, the citizens of this great county of Okaloosa. Thank you for every one of our elected officials, our other leaders throughout the county, and ask that you would just bless them in special ways or give wisdom, give direction. Lord, I pray for each one of them that they would seek your wisdom and direction in making the decisions that not only we need as citizens, but they need in following with your will. Father, we just thank you for this county and for all that it is. Thank you for the privilege of being a part of this county, being a part of the leadership. We love you. We thank you. We ask your wisdom and direction this morning that your will be done and not ours. And we thank you for all of it in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor McVeigh, and thank you to our staff with Okaloosa EMS who do a fantastic job representing our county and serving the citizens and guests. Mr. Huffstan.
Good morning, and thank you, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. It's good to be back in front of you after an extended break due to an unusual storm and snow event here in Okaloosa County a couple of weeks ago. So we have a number of service awards this morning, ranging anywhere from two years to 20 years, and we have one retirement. So I've got several individuals I would like to recognize. When I call your name, please come forward, stand with us up here, and we'll get a group photo afterwards. We have two two-year service awards. So first, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Aid Chelsea Sharon. This is Commissioner Aid for Commissioner Trey Goodwin, and this is her two-year service award. Next, I'd like to recognize Allison Sullivan. Allison is a Commissioner Aid, and this is her two-year service award, and she is Commissioner Drew Palmer's A. Next, I'd like to recognize Thomas Berrytier. He is a skater technician in water and sewer, and this is his five-year service. Also, five-year service award Shelby Serna. Shelby is the lifeguard supervisor with Beach Safety. We have one 10-year service
Good morning. Welcome to the Okaloosa County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, February 4th at 8:30 a.m. We'll begin this morning with an invocation led by Reverend Mike McVeigh. Before he comes up, I want to tell you that he has been the mascot and kind of inspiration behind Lower Hill School for the last 20 years. He's the pastor of First Baptist Lower Hill, but he also leads as Mr. Hobo, which brings around a code of morality to the students and really leads them in in school spirit and the way they're to go as they grow up. So Pastor McVeigh, I'm grateful that you're here. If you would, can lead us in the invocation. Following the invocation, we have the Pledge of Allegiance and the Presentation of the Colors by the Okaloosa County Emergency Medical Services. If you would, please stand with us.
Let us pray. Father, we love you and we thank you this morning for this opportunity. God, I thank you for the privilege and honor of representing you and being here this morning with these men and women who have been elected to represent us, the citizens of this great county of Okaloosa. Thank you for every one of our elected officials, our other leaders throughout the county, and ask that you would just bless them in special ways or give wisdom, give direction. Lord, I pray for each one of them that they would seek your wisdom and direction in making the decisions that not only we need as citizens, but they need in following with your will. Father, we just thank you for this county and for all that it is. Thank you for the privilege of being a part of this county, being a part of the leadership. We love you. We thank you. We ask your wisdom and direction this morning that your will be done and not ours. And we thank you for all of it in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor McVeigh, and thank you to our staff with Okaloosa EMS, who do a fantastic job representing our county and serving the citizens and guests. Mr. Huffstan.
Morning, and thank you, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. It's good to be back in front of you after an extended break due to a unusual storm and snow event here in Okaloosa County a couple of weeks ago. So we have a number of service awards this morning, ranging anywhere from two years to 20 years. And we have one retirement, so I've got several individuals I would like to recognize. When I call your name, please come forward, stand with us up here, and we'll get a group photo afterwards. We have two two-year service awards. So first, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Aide Chelsea Sharon. This is Commissioner Aide for Commissioner Trey Goodwin, and this is her two-year service award. Next, I'd like to recognize Allison Sullivan. Allison is a Commissioner Aide, and this is her two-year service award, and she is Commissioner Drew Palmer's Aide. Next, I'd like to recognize Thomas Berrytier. He is a skater technician in water and sewer, and this is his five-year service. Also, five-year service award Shelby Serna. Shelby is the lifeguard supervisor with Beach Safety. We have one 10-year service award, and that's for Jerry Jones. Jerry is a jail maintenance foreman with Parks and Facility Maintenance. We have one 20-year service award, and this is for Peggy Tarver. Peggy is a correctional officer with Corrections. And lastly, we want to recognize David Cole. David has been with Okaloosa County for 22 years. He was Senior Airports Maintenance Technician, and David is retiring. So we want to recognize him on.
Huffstan, County Administrator's update.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. I'll be very brief. First, I want to recognize Mr. Peters. Jeff Peters, our new Parks and Facilities Director. This is his first meeting as a county employee. Welcome aboard, Jeff. In the last item, I've had the opportunity to speak with you all individually over the last couple of weeks. I believe there's some internal efficiencies can be gained inside our organization. I'm working on a revised org chart. I hope to have that back to you at the next meeting or the following meeting, and that'll address, again, what we believe are some internal efficiencies that can be gained here in the county. And so, and I think it'll make us a better and stronger organization, and I look forward to having that in front of you here in the next couple of weeks. And with that, that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Oshahara, County Attorney's update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no updates this meeting.
Mr. Clerk.
Nothing from the Clerk's office, just happy to be here. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Today, we have some visitors with us from the Okaloosa County Board of the Commissioners Status of Women. They are here to be recognized. We're grateful for them. I want to read the names, and then I'd like to invite Ms. Mitzi Henley to the microphone to be able to address and present. What we have is the Okaloosa County Board of Commissioners Certificate of Appreciation. It's for dedicated service to the Okaloosa County Commission on the Status of Women established by the Okaloosa County Resolution 95-09 and 18-55 to improve the status of women and other citizens in Okaloosa County as OCCSW Commissioner for District Five and American Businesswomen's Association, 2017 through '24, Jackie Pilcher. The next is for Ms. Lori Zimmerman, who has thankfully been serving since 2021. Next, Dr. Eleanor McCain. Ms. Sherry Brunz. Ms. Glenda Lachorwick. Ms. Sabina Zinguzzi. I was very close, but not quite on. Erin Landman. And Ms. Linda Flowers. So if you would, Ms. Henley, would you please come forward?
Good morning. Thank you for having us today. With, this was originally scheduled for the snow, meeting for the snow. So I'm happy that Ms. Sherry Brunz is here with us to receive this directly, and then I will take the others to them at the next meeting that they're not able to be here. So, but we appreciate you honoring their service. They serve for four-year terms as volunteers with the county and put in countless hours over that time to work with other women and organizations in the community. And also today, we just, for the record, wanted to make sure that you were aware that we reported to you that we did honor some women into your Okaloosa County Women's Hall of Fame this year. So the 2024 inductees were Ms. Sharon Allen for the Mattie Kelly Arts Award, Colonel Allison Black as the Military Inductee, Judge Lacy Powell Clark as the Caroline Spencer Humanitarian Inductee, Ms. Shawna Christ as the Educational Inductee, Ms. Sheila Elliott as the Contemporary Inductee, Ms. Lori Kelly as the Business Professional Inductee, Ms. Joy Michaela as the Community Service Inductee, and Ms. Barbara Henderson-Slocombe as the Pioneer Inductee. So we continue to try to work hard and serve you, and if any of your constituents have concerns, please bring them to us. So we'd like to recognize Sherry and receive the others at this time. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to just say a couple of things. These women are not just pretty faces. These women work very hard. In the last couple of years, they have changed the face of human trafficking in the state of Florida. Ms. Henley won a statewide award for her work on human trafficking. In the, for instance, when you go into the restrooms, any restroom in the airport, there's a way for women to get help if they need help to get out of human trafficking. That was her idea. We also tackled mental health in the last year, and that is a big issue, you know, everywhere. So I want to say that it's not just about, you know, having your face on the wall and being represented, although I'm privileged to be in the Hall of Fame. I'm so grateful for that. It's about the service that these women have given to our community, volunteer service that would not have happened without them. So thank you all for your work, and each Commissioner appoints two for four-year terms. So thank you very much.
Mitzi? We have a picture together.
I'm in the middle. Closer to the side. Thank you.
It's time we'll go into public comments. You'll have up to three minutes to speak about any topic of your choosing. Please honor the three-minute timeline, and please, please honor the opportunity to respect others in the choices that you make. We'll begin with Willie Harmon.
First, even honor to God. Thank you, guys, for allowing me to come in to your county commissioner meeting. I'm here for one reason only. I'm here to speak on behalf of Savannah Heights Community Park. It hasn't brought to your attention yet, but it's been before Mr. Goodwin and his staff. So hopefully, at some point in time, this will be coming for you guys again till we can talk about developing a park in the Savannah Heights community area, which is much needed. We have a park in the community, but it doesn't meet our needs for the community. It's a much-growing community, and we need to try to have some facilities in place to meet the needs of that community. So again, I'm here on behalf of Savannah Heights. I want to ask for a, at some point in time, to be back before this board to present a proposal for a park being built in the Savannah Heights area. And again, I thank you for your time, and that's all I had to say, and I'm going to bring that before you. So thank you for your time, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just really quick, since I don't get the opportunity to speak to the board about these things, so Mr. Harmon, I haven't been able to share with my colleagues kind of what we're looking at. But just wanted to let everybody know, Mr. Harmon and his church has got some property that's strategically located. He, I think his congregation and his leadership would like to kind of work with the county and see if we can do some improvements in the area. So we don't have everything formulated yet, but we hope to bring something back. And Mr. Harmon, so you know, sorry we missed our meeting because of the snow day. The county canceled everything because of the roads. But if you'll see Ms. Sharon, I think you and I are going to get together. We're going to sit down, meet, and bring in Lisa Payton from the code side. And also, I want to bring in Jeff Peters, who you may remember from the city of Fort Walton.
Correct.
He now is the director that will oversee all the recreation facilities and other things too in Okaloosa County. So I think if we could get Jeff into that meeting, it would be a very strategic, you know, addition. So I look forward to it, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And thank you again, board, and thank you, Mr. Goodwin, for the comments. God bless you. Have a good day.
Sorry, Mr. Brian Howe.
Sure. I guess this isn't really comments, some more questions than anything else concerning the Dorcas Fire Board in the Fort Dorcas Fire District. I've been out of town for a while, came back in last fall, and discovered that the fire, Dorcas Fire District was, had changed status. And I was kind of wondering, at this point, I know you had a board meeting, and I think the last one was in September. Just wondering if you're planning on having another one and what the current status is of plans for the fire district in that area. Being ex-fire chief for the North Okaloosa Fire District, I'm interested in volunteering for Dorcas. So I'm kind of curious as to what's going on with that.
Sure, Mr. Huffstan.
Yes, sir. We, obviously, that was an action of the state, which transferred that oversight to the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners has met once as a sitting Dorcas Board. As part of that process, the board has the authority to take on issues related to Dorcas during a regular BCC meeting, which we have done. So we are in the process of completing audits for that facility now. We're working several mutual aid agreements between North Okaloosa, Crestview, and Almarant. We have had sufficient coverage for that area in the interim. So we're continuing to work through those issues, and then the board will convene as to the next steps going forward. But certainly, sir, we will keep you in mind as to any volunteer opportunities related to the Dorcas Fire District.
Because I know that Dorcas, or excuse me, North Okaloosa, Almarant, and Crestview are covering the district. But my understanding that that was supposed to be a short-term agreement. Are you planning on going into a long-term agreement into that, or?
That remains to be seen. Obviously, that's a decision of this Board of County Commissioners. I will tell you that from our perspective, we have cited a quick response vehicle at that location. And I can tell you, based on the times, our response times have been much more aggressive than what that district was getting prior to us having that QRV cited on that facility. So I know from a coverage perspective, the coverage has been better than what it was. But it remains to be seen, based on the action of the BCC, what we do going forward. Is that reconstituting a Dorcas Fire Department? Is that some conglomeration of those north-end districts into a more robust fire department? That remains to be seen.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Demetrius Bronka. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Demetrius Bronka, and I'm here to ask for your help to save lives in your community and across the state. I'm a dad from Tallahassee, and I'm on a mission to save lives. I'm a member of the Hands Free Florida Coalition, which consists of bicycle groups, pedestrian groups, nonprofits, insurance companies, law enforcement. And we are asking the state legislature to pass a hands-free law in the state of Florida this year in the session. In the 30 states plus the District of Columbia that have passed hands-free laws, there has been an immediate and measurable reduction in traffic fatalities by up to 25%. Here in Okaloosa County, there were 3,000, almost 3,200 crashes, resulting in almost 2,000 injuries and 19 deaths. If we can save 25% of those people, those are people that you probably know. My son Anthony was one of those victims. Anthony was a joy. He was everything a parent could hope for. He was resilient. He was smart, hard-working, kind, funny. He was beloved by his teachers and his bosses. And there are several families that I can name off the top of my head who considered Anthony like another son. Anthony was on his way from his early morning shift at a bagel shop to the community college on a Friday when he was struck from behind by someone who, a grown adult, who knew better and chose to drive distracted anyway. That day obviously changed my life and set me on the path I am on today. In 2024, during the legislative session, I was able to usher a good, hands-free bill through the House of Representatives with the help of sponsor Allison Tant from Tallahassee. We were really close. It went through all three committees. It was assigned to with unanimous bipartisan unopposed support. We were really close, but in the Senate, there was one individual in a position of decision-making who decided that he didn't want to hear this bill. So the bill died because it was never agendaed in his committee. This resolution that I am asking you to adopt in Okaloosa County has been adopted in Leon County, Indian River County, Collier County. It's on its way to being adopted in Santa Rosa County, Gattston County, Orange County, Mindy Dade County, Broward County. I've spoken to Commissioners in all of those places, and I'm on a mission. I'm visiting as many county commissions as I can to speak directly to the Commissioners in hopes that you will adopt this, and in doing so, that we can save lives. Please hear me. Understand that this is, this comes from a place of love. This comes from a place of not wanting to see anyone suffer the way my family has suffered because losing Anthony was like a bomb going on in my life, a bomb going off in the middle of my life. It shredded the relationship that I had with my fiance at the time, and my younger son, Isaac, has suffered as a result of his father losing his mind. So please, it's not just for those that we lose. It's for the families that are left behind. I recently emailed a copy of the resolution to all of you, and I hope you received it, and I hope you will pass it, adopt it. And if you really want to add some fuel to this fire, make it a part of Okaloosa County's legislative priorities, and that will really light a fire under the legislators to make something happen and save lives. Thank you for your time. I appreciate your attention and your energy. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kenneth Fuller.
I want to bring to your attention, I read the Crestview New Bulliston, and this lady named Sandra Fiedlermore Perkins. She wrote in there that y'all, the ERP funds that y'all gave the Baker Museum, this whole lot of money. She is the same age I am, born in July 1963, and she's 61 like I am. But I need to read this out to the lawyers that are up there. And, and to the, to the two lawyers that are up there. The Supreme Court say in the Primo of the Rules of Regulating the Florida Board, Rules of Discipline Rule 311, privileged to practice, a license to practice law prefer no vested right to withhold thereof, but it's a conditional privilege that is revocable for the cause. So the reason why I brought that up. Also, I need to read this to you, Mr. Smith, about sheriff's deputy that's in here real quick. Their duty on this Florida statute 315, the sheriffs in the respective counties and the person or by sheriffs that execute all process of the Supreme Court, Circuit Court, County Court, and Board of County Commission of this state to be executed in their county. Executed such writ process warrants and other paper directly to them as may come to their hand to be executed in their counties attend all sections of the Circuit Court, County Court. To be executed in their counties, attend all sections of the Circuit Court, County Court held in their county. Execute all orders of the Board of the County Commissioners of their county for which the service they shall receive shall be compensation out of the county treasury as said. As said, board may be deemed proper. So you're contracted with the sheriff. I don't like when I'm up here and you telling them, hey, they can put you in jail just that they is therefore also for you if you get out of line, not just for me. You're, there's not their bodyguard. The treasury is the taxpayer money, not your money, sir. So I don't, I don't appreciate that one bit. Now let me go back to the ARP thing. Reason why I wrote that to the attorneys, because it says on this that oh, here we go. They are Peter, it, the program does not have a uniform process. So that mean that the uniform process that y'all can just give money to your friend. But the Baker Museum, who you gave that money to, is a nonprofit and they can't apply directly grant to that place. And somebody on your board or friends with them, this lady named Bell Span and the lady Perkins that do the news bulletin worked for her and that's illegal. That, that you cannot do none of that. And if you want to rebuttal me, you can, I'm here if you want to do that. You know, if you want to rebuttal and, and that's illegal. And what you did, because I, and I gotta, I didn't say everything else that I was gonna say. Whatever, but I just want you to know that, Mr. Smith. And I know, and, 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 uh, that's okay. Well, I said what I had to say. I'm not a good speaker, but you got what I was saying. I guarantee you that.
Be moving to the consent agenda.
Excuse me, Chairman?
Yes.
Did I say one thing?
Sure.
Just want to say something to Mr. Bronka. It took a lot of courage for you to come here. This is a wonderful way to advocate for something that needs to be changed. I thank you for the courage to come and speak about Anthony and how hard that is for your loss. There's a group called the Florida Association of Counties and they are based out of Tallahassee, but it has all 67 counties. That might be another way for you to outreach if you could get on their statewide agenda. So thank you for coming today.
So any desire for action on the consent?
I'd like to pull 29, please, for discussion. I'll move approval minus 29.
A second. A motion for approval minus 29 from Commissioner Ketchel.
The only reason I pulled this, I just wanted to make sure that if anybody looked at the consent agenda closely. We have four, I think, four sanitation groups in Okaloosa County. And Commissioner Boyle's wife owns Adam Sanitation. She's making application now that he's no longer sitting with this body. There's nothing untoward about it. In fact, it's completely legal. I just wanted to say that in case somebody questioned it. Do you want to say anything?
I'd just simply add to this. This is not a contract with the county in any way, shape or form. This simply allows Adam Sanitation to perform commercial waste services in our non-exclusive commercial franchise. This allows him to enter into a very competitive market for solid waste services throughout Okaloosa County. Previously, Adam Sanitation did not apply for this because of Commissioner Boyle's affiliation with the commission, which I think was a smart move, but he certainly is willing and able to do so now, and I welcome the competition.
A motion for approval.
So we have a motion. Do you want to recant the one removing 29 and just take the consent agenda now that that has been spoken?
Sure.
Any further comments? All right, all in favor, signify with a I. Passes unanimously. Like to move around just a touch on the agenda. Mr. Autry, your number one is approval of the infrastructure surtax advisory committee. And your chair of that committee is here, and so, Mr. Turpin, thank you for volunteering on that committee. I would like for you to go next with that item so that we can honor your time being a volunteer leading that committee.
And I thank you for that, sir. Jason Autry Public Works, as required by our bylaws with the surtax advisory committee, an annual report must be submitted to the county commission. It's supposed to be done by January 31st. We were ready to do it on January 21st. However, mild eight inch snow event caused that meeting to be canceled. The good news is it was published and prior to the deadline, we were simply making the formal presentation to it. Mr. Matt Turpin is here. He is the committee chair for the surtax advisory committee and is ready to give an update to it. I'm very happy to say that this is one of our better committees. They have something that lot lack, which is a tremendous resource. So with that, I'll leave it to Mr. Turpin to give you the update.
Good morning, Board of County Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us this time to give you a summary of what happened during the fiscal year 2024. On the the infrastructure surtax advisory committee, which was voter approved half cent sales tax of the county in late 2018. The other board members are Larry Ward, Jeff Fanto, Hannah Wilburn and Jim Foreman. And we all approve this report. The report is 13 pages long. The, 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 the first 13, or give me the first 12 pages are summary of the project from the year. Page 13, I'll give you a summary. The fiscal year 2024, the revenue collected was over $22 million. Since inception, we've collected close to 114 million dollars, which is an average of almost $19 million a year. When we first got into this, we were estimating $14 million a year. So this half cent sales tax has not been on the burden of Okaloosa County residents. We've had interest or earnings on that fund balance of almost $2 million and since inception, 4.2 million dollars. So our money is working for us. The spending for 2024 was 21.8 million dollars. Since inception, we have spent 63.7 million dollars on projects that we see around the county. Currently, the fund balance is $54 million. Our highlights from this past year, of course, is the Southwest Crestview bypass. We're, we're into phase five. It's expected phase five, phase one and phase four have been completed. Phase five is expected to be completed in July of 2025 this year. Another project, the County Road 2 widening, which has gotten visibility, not just here locally, but on a, on a regional news channel. And along with the dirt to pave, we paved 150 miles. When we had estimated, or we had hoped to pave 50 miles. So we have tripled that. So our committee meets every two months. We thank county staff for their excellent job of reporting and, and supplying this information. The best projects we have are projects that have matching grants where if we put up, put up some money, the grant also is supplied, so we make more of that dollar from the county. So that is our report. I appreciate your time and open to any questions.
Commissioners, Mr. Goodman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion if that's appropriate. And, and if I have a second, then the opportunity to make some comment, but I'd, I'd move that we accept the report as presented. So, you know, I think that the surtax committee has done just a fantastic job. I, I am so grateful for the accomplishments that we've been able to make. And of course, the, I think the, the most critical component of the whole program is that it was something that the constituents and the voters in Okaloosa County said, this is what we want to do. We didn't tell them that's what we're going to do. So we've basically taken a charge from the, from the voters and implemented a policy they adopted. And I think that's just a fantastic thing. And I also wanted to take a quick second to thank Mr. Turpin for serving. I, I asked him, you know, some years ago, when this program was getting off and going, if he would, if he would consider serving as my appointee. And, you know, he's been very generous with his time to volunteer and, and do that. And I think he's done such a wonderful job. And even though he doesn't live in my district, District 4, you know, this board adopted a policy that said, this is such a wide scope program that we don't look through the narrow blinders of just about our own district. And so we look for, you know, the collective talent to bring together and serve our whole county. And I think that's really what this program's done. So thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I hope as a county, folks see the benefit of this. It's been tremendous. It would have been tremendous had it met its own goals, but it far exceeded its goals. And the dollar that's been able to be used that we wouldn't have dreamed of accomplishing as a county with these projects. These are things that counties with mileage rates like ours do not see. They don't get to accomplish. And for such a small task of a surtax. And then the opportunity comes up in a couple of years to, to go into this again or not. I don't see how folks would not choose to go into this again in, in the partnership model that it is. Because really, that's, that's what it comes down to is a partnership between the folks that are here to live, to work, or just to vacation. We're all paying in this together because we're all using these resources together. And so thank you for the, the work that you're doing. I'm grateful to have Larry Ward on there, telling you how to work as a chairman.
It's much, the advice is much appreciated.
He brought his experience with him from his long tenured career to, to utilize that. And that, that's helpful on the public safety side. And it's also helpful on the north end side to be able to speak to the issues firsthand from being raised here. So, so thank you for the entire committee that you have and for your leadership on it.
True.
Yes, ma'am.
One other thing, I think it's important, and I think I'm right on this, Jason, but the half penny sales tax is largely paid for by tourism.
Yeah, 40%.
40%.
40% at least, in the summer time.
Yeah, that's really important to let everybody know that, you know, we're getting something back for all the tourists. And the, the other thing I also want to call out Jeff, besides Matt Turpin, Jeff Fanto is my appointment. And he's been, I'm sure, an asset with his background and knowledge. Thank you so much.
All in favor, signify with a I. Passes unanimously. Ms. Clerk, I'm sorry, I didn't say it out loud. That first was from Trey Goodman, the second from Carolyn Ketchel. Further department business, Mr. Camper. Ms. Brittany Orr, I'm glad that you're here with him. Thank you for the work that you've begun to do in our housing department.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I was going to introduce Ms. Orr, but you've already taken care of that. So thank you very much. Yes, we are very glad to have Ms. Orr with us. It's also nice to be here this morning with a positive agenda item that, you know, we've been working on for a while now. And just by way of a little bit of background, as you all know, the county participates in the state housing initiative partnership program known as SHIP. One of the things you have to do in order to utilize the SHIP program, which is funded by the state, which gives money for the provision of affordable housing, is you have to have what's called a local housing assistance plan. Okaloosa County has dutifully adopted a local housing assistance plan going all the way back to 1993 when the program first started. This local housing assistance program outlines the various strategies that are utilized in order to help provide affordable housing to the very low, low and moderate income housing members of our community. And so if it's not in your local housing assistance program, you can't utilize the funds, whatever that stated purpose would be. We have had a down payment assistance program in the local housing assistance plan for quite some time. Unfortunately, back in, starting in the early 2000s, the state started not funding the SHIP program as it should. And the result was it was not sufficient funding in order to have this program functional. However, the last several years, the state has been providing significant funds to SHIP. And so it is time to start reinitiating this program. The local Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, which the board selects and helps oversee the implementation of SHIP program, had several discussions regarding the down payment assistance program and has recommended some changes be made since the last time it was implemented, which was probably a little over a decade ago. The first of these changes is to increase the maximum award from $30,000 to $65,000. I think we're all very well aware of what's happened to housing prices and $30,000. Frankly, working with the members of the AHAQ, who are also involved in banking and finance, they felt that that was not going to achieve the stated goal very well. So the recommendation was to take it to $65,000. Second thing is, is the way the program works under the ALHAP now is that it's a 10 year forgivable loan. There is no amortization. You, you get the money and then at the end of 10 years, the whole amount is forgiven. The AHAQ has felt very strongly that that might be a bit too much, you know, all or nothing, so to speak, recognizing how people do move around. And so the recommendation change is to take it to where for the first five years, there's no forgiveness. So years one, one through four, if you sell the house, if you rent it out, if it's no longer your own primary residence, you're in default, you give the entire amount back. But starting in year five, there's a 50% reduction and then 10% every year thereafter until you get to year 10, in which time the total amount is forgiven. Third, basically, the currently right now under the program, you can use it for down payment, closing costs and rehab when rehab is required. We'll talk about that in a minute. Again, looking at housing and how things work, the AHAQ has felt that it's important to include additional eligible costs, not only down payment assistance, but also closing costs, mortgage buydown, principal reduction and efficiency upgrades, which can include things like air conditioners and, you know, some electrical type stuff that will make the home more affordable over the long term for the families that's buying in. Again, keeping, you know, in mind, we're dealing with very low, low and moderate income levels of, of families. That can be very important. So that, again, we want to add to the list of things that that money can be used for. And finally, it's quite possible, you know, certainly with the housing prices we're dealing with now, with the clientele we're going to be working with, it's more than likely there's going to be some rehabilitation costs are going to be included. Got a lot of houses need new roofs, windows, the wind envelope for insurance is very important. And so basically, what is being recommended is now is to add to the additional information section that a certified home inspection is required. That's not currently required, that we can identify the issues. And that these funds may also be leveraged with federal, state and private funds as well as donations, which again opens up additional pots of funding. And that if rehab and repairs are necessary, that a minimum of $5,000 be utilized for repairs. And that's significant because the way SHIP works is we have to meet certain set aside requirements and certain restrictions on the use of the money. 75% of the money that we get from SHIP has to be used one way or another for construction, of which 65% has to be for homeownership. So this program has the potential for us to encumber some significant amount of SHIP funds in furtherance of our goals. Why the $5,000 minimum is because if, you know, the house needs a new roof or some new windows or whatever like that, then not just the amount that's being used for rehab, but the entire amount, the 65,000 would be drawn down against our requirement for that 75% to be involved in new construction. So it helps us meet our obligations under the SHIP program and it helps the families get a house with a roof that might last a while and some better windows, more energy efficient windows. And the reason the minimum was set aside is because the state obviously does still have oversight and they audit us and they look at what we're doing. Ms. Orr worked with the Florida Housing Finance Corporation and they agree that it's appropriate to utilize in this way, but they don't want, you know, cosmetic repairs, say changing face plates on your outlets for a couple hundred bucks to draw down an entire 65,000 when it comes to, you know, new housing construction. So they believe that $5,000 minimum is a reasonable amount to spend on rehabilitation that will also help us meet the new, the new construction requirements. Now, we do have a joint plan with the city of Fort Walton Beach. We have an internal local agreement going back years that, you know, they basically defer implementation of the SHIP program for the funds that they are allocated to us. So anything that we would do to the ALHAP that needs to be adopted and changed, they have to look at. And I'm pleased to say that on December 17th of 2024, the city of Fort Walton Beach did approve all of these proposed changes already. So what you're asked, being asked to do is we have two local housing assistance plans in play right now because of the way the years, the allocations are staggering out. So the amendment will be active for the ALHAPs that are covering fiscal years 2019 and 2020 through the 24, 25. So that encumbers, you know, quite, quite a fair amount of funds. And frankly, you know, we think that this program is going to be, you know, fairly successful. And there's been some thought, you know, well, you know, we don't want this to be overwhelmed and, you know, what is, what is the man really going to be? And in talking with the chairman of, regarding this program, we suggested that we come back and give the Board of County Commissioners an update, you know, once this thing gets rolling, to, you know, who, who are we serving? How much, how much of the fund has been encumbered? And it's been suggested maybe when we start to hit the quarter million dollar mark, that we come back to the board and let you know what's happening, both the applications. Both the applications that have been received and processed, as well as what the overall sponsor and what's in the hopper. And so with that, I will stop talking. Ms. Orr knows more about it than I do. Ms. Orr can certainly answer any of the detailed questions you may have, and I'll be happy to try as well. Thank you.
Commissioners, the reason for the ask to come back to us. One, we're several years behind in our funding. And we have the money, thankfully, due to diligent work of Mr. Camper and Ms. Orr. We can still use those funds. We didn't have to send any back, but this will give us an opportunity of being able to to expend them to help folks with down payment assistance, which as stated, we haven't done in many, many years. What I don't want to see is when Florida entered into the Live Local Act, they brought about a hometown heroes program, which was fantastic. And it gave an opportunity of down payment assistance to hometown heroes. And within days, it was expended in totality for the year, each time it was introduced. And so I don't want us to go from being years in the year, in the rear of being able to fund that to starting a new program that we see took off so well that now we don't have any left to be able to do continuation of housing rehabilitation. So I think coming back and letting us know how fast it's going or how slow it's going, but at the same time, who, people that we're serving, that'll give us a better take on where our numbers should be. Because right now it will just be open, but this will give us the opportunity of putting some fences up to be able to make this program survive and last. And so that was the only comment I had. Commissioner Ketchel.
I'll move for approval. See if I get a second for discussion. I want to reserve a moment here.
I'll second.
Thank you. So this is, I've known about this program forever as a social worker. It's a wonderful program. It allows low income persons to get into housing. But then when you get in there, the windows and the roof eventually needs to be replaced. So I applaud you, you know, we've talked, I applaud you for putting this in place because many of us have trouble paying for twenty thousand dollar roofs. So this is a wonderful opportunity to continue to keep these homes and folks in them that make a minimum amount of money, that struggle to pay their monthly bills and yet have affordable housing. So really happy about this.
Mr. Palmer.
And I just want to say thank you as well. Appreciate the meeting that you guys, the time that you guys took to take to meet with us and to kind of educate us on the, you know, just everything that, all the parameters that you have to, that you have to meet in order to expend this money. It's, it's very complex and I think you guys have done an excellent job of just kind of laying that out and making sure that we're able to spend this money that's available to us. So I just want to thank you guys for your work on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Goodwin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And yeah, I'll start by saying I'll, you know, I will support the motion and these updates. I think you've articulated, you know, good reasons why it makes sense. And I'll apologize. I know Elliot, we didn't get a chance to meet beforehand. Just with the snow day cancellations, I got so time compressed, it just, you know, some things just couldn't get done. But I did have a couple of questions. So the program, as I understand it, is it, is it really twofold? Is it one, a down payment assistance program? And then also a program to help fund improvements to already owned owner occupied properties?
That's exactly correct. And that's, I think, work Commissioner Michigan was in part going with that. We have a separate strategy under the ALHAP that's not changing. It says that, you know, right now, if you owns your home and need help with the roof, whether or not your buying has been to your house, you can come in and if your income qualified, you can get assistance in putting on a new roof, windows or what needs you need.
And help me understand, are those thresholds already at a level that we think are sufficient under the?
Actually, they're being looked at. The, it's a next AHAQ meeting on February the sixth, I believe, that issue is probably going to come up. We all, we will anticipate probably bringing a change back to the board of county commissioners to that as well.
Okay.
Because costs have gone up.
Yeah, no, no. And I, I understand that. And I'll just say, between the two programs, the one I tend to favor more is the program that helps people rehabilitate their already owned properties. And I'll explain why. I mean, frankly, you know, at that point, you've got someone that's owner occupied, could be a senior citizen that's now on a fixed income and don't have, you know, haven't had adjustments to their, to their fixed income that would, you know, track with the type of inflation we've seen, especially in the construction industry. So I, you know, that, that's one, you know, kind of grammar looking at it. The down, the down payment assistance program is one that I, I support, but I support with some reason to caution. And the reason that, for that, and that I think we need to be careful with it. And I'm sure that the federal program has got, you know, the income verification and all those sorts of things. But you start from the perspective of, yes, it's nice to get people into homeownership. But if they're starting out with a deficiency in the down payment, that means that the commercial lenders have already determined they're not really in a great position to be doing this. And so there is a concern that we're helping someone get into an issue that they're not really going to be able to keep up with. Now, does that happen often? I don't know. It's a concern. I didn't say I don't support the program. I said I support the program with caution. So I wonder, do we have data to show, you know, from a, you know, a historical perspective, maybe a five year, ten year period of time, you know, maybe even longer if we have the type of data to, to track, you know, when we've used the down, the down payment assistance either here or pick a regional basis. I mean, if we could grab the data from across the panhandle perhaps and see how those trends have been, you know, have those been success stories? Have people been able to take the downtown, down payment assistance, maintain homeownership and maintain their obligations to their lender for the balance of their mortgages? Or have they faced, you know, financial problems, foreclosures or short sales or things like that? Because they got into a, you know, basically into a product that they couldn't afford. You know, I, you know, it happens to people all the time buying cars. They get talked into buying something that's too much for them and then it doesn't go well. You know, I just don't, you know, I want to be cautious that we don't participate in that. Because that's certainly not the goal. I mean, we're not trying to get somebody into a house for a few years and then put them into a financial crunch, right?
And Ms. Orr and I do not work for commission, so.
Right, right. So our purpose is really just to take the funds and help people get into homes that they can use and enjoy. So that's kind of why I look at the, the, the program that updates an already owned house a little differently from helping somebody buy something that they actually don't qualify to buy. But I'd love to know if we have that kind of data or if not, if we could get it. Because I think it would be really helpful for us to understand how to, you know, kind of how this program is working. Again, I just, you know, like I said, I mean, you start from the premise that the commercial lenders aren't going to make the loan because they've determined the person doesn't meet minimum qualifications. So we're artificially subsidizing that, which is okay. I just want to see how it's working out.
Couple of thoughts on that. One is even, even through this program, we, we are not going to be proving people that to end up with a payment that's going to win thirty percent of their income. Okay, so we're not signing somebody up for massive mortgage payments that we know right off the bat they can't make. And that's where we have to have, the lenders are part of this because they, and they actually have to attend and get a certificate through like a preferred lender courses as they understand who they're working with. And they're our partners in doing throughout the income qualification process of the applicants. Because we don't want to set somebody up to fail. But you raise a good point because best intentions, right? And I mean, that movie The Money Pit's an instructional video because that's what, that's what happens. So we're very well aware of that. And that also brings up the point that, you know, it's going to be difficult to assist people in the very low and even low income categories since because with the price of housing and, and what the needs are going to be. And we have to be careful because we have set asides to meet those, to meet those parts of our, of our public. Moderate income will probably be the people that can, you know, most readily succeed through this. And obviously, we're going to help moderate income people as well. But we do have to meet the very low and low categories as well because the state does monitor that. Which is why we have in there, you know, we're not going to sign you up to where you're paying forty-seven percent of your income to your mortgage because that's just not sustainable. But in regard to the data, we'll go back and, you know, go through our records. And a lot of the records that we received from our prior contractor are not in the shape that we might have liked them to be in, but we'll harvest what we can. And I'm certain, you know, I'm sure that the Florida Housing Finance Corporation probably has some data and statistics, at least as far as statewide, how has this program succeeded? I mean, because that is a very important point and what works and what doesn't.
Well, thank you for speaking to that. And like I said, I'll, I'll support the request.
Thank you.
They've broken those numbers down at their annual meeting by region. I didn't see it any more defined than region, but I have seen it.
Yeah, I don't have those numbers memorized.
No, no, thankfully not. If I can make one suggestion, just to give us kind of praiseworthy victories together. When we do experience satisfaction of these over time, not necessarily just down payment assistance, but even housing rehabilitation, can we have that as a, an update in the commission meeting so that we can see another person has been satisfied? I know a few months ago, we had one that we had to discuss and take action on to see the satisfaction, but they had met all of the requirements. I think that may help us in this endeavor to know that, that the decisions we're making are seeing fruitful outcomes. And so if we could do that, that would be great.
Mr. Chairman, just so I understand what you're saying, are you suggesting that when someone reaches that milestone, we bring them in and give them some sort of a formal, here's your cancellation?
We could take that step as a very public approach.
I would support that if that's what the chairman was saying.
That we know satisfaction has happened. And what started more than a decade ago, you've reached the completion of and it's totally forgiven. I think that would be a good, a good stance for us as a commission. Any further discussion? Sure, Cox.
I just wanted to say, and thank you very much for the teleconference that we had on this. I know it happened during the snow days and we were supposed to meet on it and weren't able to. But I was absolutely blown away at the amount of work and dedication you guys were able to give this. In addition to everything else that you, that you do in growth management. I wanted to, to sort of just canvas something for a second that I have heard. You know, as a lifelong resident of Oaklusa County, I've heard so many people tell me that the, the ability to attain homeownership for them is increasingly difficult. It has become, you know, just insurmountable. I hear from people who have been in their rental homes for five, ten, fifteen years, able to make it with a little bit of wiggle room, but not able to save, you know, for example, the thirty thousand that is now fifty thousand and then sixty thousand for just a median income home, you know, just a median priced home right now is unaffordable for so many of our citizens that I, I frankly fear losing them without some way to reach out and give them hope. If we can, you know, even reach those median income families, the families that you discussed were going to be most successful in this program with down payment assistance. I really feel like that is an incredible use of our resources and I applaud you for working on this. But thank you so much for making this possible for even those families.
All in favor, signify with a I. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Camper.
Thank you all very much.
Mr. Autry.
Chuck just said round two. Jason Autry, Public Works, we have three additional items for consideration. Ironically, two of these are actually surtax related items to follow on the heels of the report from Mr. Turpin. The first is a request to the allocation of two point one million dollars for the construction and CEI services related to the College Boulevard, College Boulevard Forest Road Multi-Use Path. Do want to point out that the two point one million dollars is a match. And in fact, two point one million dollars turns into about five million dollars worth of work through the surtax program because we did get an allocation for the state on this. We have these funds allocated for construction and our inspection services to complete and construct this project. We continue to work with Eglin to get the final little dots on the agreement for constructing out there. Believe it or not, Cal, Cal's Boulevard is on federal property through an easement. We just have to make sure that we comply with their rules. See no obstacles to that and we're ready to go build this project with your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Autry. Commissioners? Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Palmer. Second by Commissioner Cox. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with a I. Passes unanimously.
Second item is a request to allocate four million dollars in surtax reserves to the now passe term of fifty and five program. As Mr. Turpin had mentioned, we have been able to stabilize all of our dirt roads in Oaklusa County, which were about two hundred miles initially with a lime rock base. They are substantially better. I will tell you, they fared very, very well, even buried under eight inches of snow. But we want to cap those roads so that they are that much safer and that much more passable at all times. In order to complete the effort of capping the roadways, it will take about seven million dollars. And that is too much work for us to execute in one year through Public Works with all else that we have. And so what we've requested is to break it up into two parts, the first year being a four million dollar allocation. That number is important. First of all, it's about half of what we got. Plus, it's what we have been allocating through the surtax program to the fifty and five program in the last couple of years. We will accomplish this through a mix of in-house forces as well as contracting it out, just like we did with the lime rock placement. But we're excited to go ahead and stabilize more roadways with asphalt if approved. The surtax committee did approve the allocation of the four million dollars. The funds are available and we certainly seek the approval.
Commissioners? Love to have a motion. Okay.
Yep.
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Cox, second by Commissioner Ketchel. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Goodwin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say, of course, you know, I, I think this may have been a program that former Commissioner Boils really kind of dreamed up. And I thought it was pie in the sky when he brought it, but I was, you know, glad to go along with him because I've personally witnessed a commissioner to get, you know, lambasted by a citizen who lived on a clay road after a rainstorm. So when you pave my road, so I, I think he had a, I think he was on the right track. Turns out he was, he was spot on with this program. You know, it's amazing, Jason, what you and your team, you know, in conjunction with our contractors have been able to accomplish. I think you said we've now stabilized all the roads we have.
All of the dirt roads in Oaklusa County, I say all, there is about ten miles of capital improvement roads where we're doing a full on roadway construction that we have funding and we're moving forward on. But all of our dirt roads are now stabilized. Commissioner Cox and I went to the Department of Transportation District Three office last Tuesday for a meeting. And we had a little postmortem on the snow event. And one of the questions that was asked of me was how many graders does Oaklusa County have? And I said, well, we only have two. And they kind of turned their head side. I said, because we have no dirt roads. And that was just shocking to them that we're in that situation. But we've reduced our grader fleet from eight down to two. We don't have to spend the maintenance hours. We used to run those every single road, every single week with a grader and an operator. Those employees are now doing other work. As important, if not more important, that when we get a rain event, we aren't getting calls into the office of those citizens that are right, the roads aren't right because they're able to travel home safely as is. So we're able to carry on and do the other business we need to conduct. So it is a stone that was threw into the water and the ripple has been very, very positive for us all the way around.
Yeah, well, I would, you know, I, I think, you know, it's been very well received. And of course, you know, I mean, it touches many things. One, our costs on maintenance. Two, quality of life for people that, that live, that were living on, you know, on improved roads. And then, you know, obviously the safety component, being able to get, you know, emergency services and, and all those things.
And the environmental component.
And the environmental with the, with the runoff. I mean, it just, it, it really checks every box. So I think it's been an excellent program. And then I think, you know, it sounds to me like really then we're on target to not only just stabilize every road, but literally pave every road that is in our responsibility.
I'll modestly correct the terminology and perhaps the semantics. We are going to stabilize and cap every road with asphalt. It's not a full on paved inch and a half structural roadway with stormwater. But yes, every road will have an asphalt cap on it in about two years.
For those of us who aren't engineers, we call them paved road.
Fair enough. For those of us that deal with attorneys, they're stabilized.
I, I actually think this is a really cool thing and it, you know, based on the trajectory, it could actually happen or come close to happening, you know, in my current term. So, which is the only term I'm guaranteed to still be here. But I'll say that, Jeff, you may remember this. I was at the city of Fort Walton Beach when we paved our last dirt road in the city. It's the one over there off of Mariestra Cut Off behind KFC and so forth. So it'd be really cool to be here when we pave our last dirt road.
Maybe Nathan shouldn't get the credit.
But I, yeah, well, no, I'll be happy to, I'll be happy to stand right next to him because I'm sure at some point we'll do something to celebrate it and he'll probably be around.
It was a tremendous idea and execution.
It really was. So thank you.
Commissioner Cox?
I just wanted to say an extra thank you to Jason for being willing to, to go over to the Florida Department of Transportation with me so early after taking my seat. It was no secret that I ran on roads and bridges.
After taking my seat, it was no secret that I ran on roads and bridges. And frankly, I ran on the state owned roads and bridges, you know, improving the 85 corridor and, and the transportation to and from, you know, our, our lives basically. From the north end to the south end and the jobs that happen in between. That, that was an aggressive ask for, for Jason. I know that Jason is very busy. You know, now that Jason's been very, very busy. And the conversations that we had with Secretary Gainer and his entire team were, were so open and, and that he took so much ownership in Okaloosa County as one of the 16 that are served, you know, by F dot. They really, they, I, I should have posted it already and I'm ashamed that I haven't. They, they have in their boardroom a picture of us everywhere, the Brooks Bridge, our, our inner coastal waterways. They really take such pride in our county that I anticipate doing great work with them moving forward to solve those issues. And, and one of the things that they addressed right off the bat was the transportation issues and complaints and everything that everybody had, you know, during the snowmageddon, if you will. This is what I think he, the term he used to coin that. Anyway, he, he addressed that and we talked about how, you know, there were resources that could be pulled over in any other situation, you know, to address, you know, what had happened and, you know, why did we have so few road graders and what have you? And the answer is that we could have, you know, spent a bunch of extra money to have, you know, reserves of salt and graders and those kinds of things just sitting there. But those millions of dollars would not be useful to you. You know, while we're trying to get these other things accomplished to make your lives easier and better and, and better to get to and more enjoyable. So Jason, your answers for that, I thought were just impeccable. And Secretary Gainer, you know, having us as Okaloosa County as a top priority was just a good, a feel-good way to get my own term started off. And I thought I would deliver that back to you as citizens of Okaloosa County because you deserve to hear it. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the side of? Mr. Ketchel?
So yeah, I think maybe we ought to make a motion at some point to name it the Nathan Boils Lime Rock Restoration Program. I really do. I mean, especially as he moves forward to becoming a representative. The, I would agree with everything you said about F D O T. They've been great partners, except I want them to get that Shalimar Bridge recreated.
It's in their work plan. They're letting it this summer.
Before August of 2025, I've been on them like on the phone every week.
We brought it up while we were there. They're going to let that project this summer.
But they've been great. I mean, when you look at the work that's being done in Okaloosa, like she just said, it's amazing how much work they have done for us.
Currently, the state is executing $350 million worth of infrastructure work in Okaloosa County.
I used to feel jealous when I traveled to the south end of the state and I'd see so much going on with F D O T, but they're doing a lot for us. So.
All in favor, signify with a aye. That passes unanimously. Number four.
Last item for consideration is the request to approve the contract with Empire Builder Group, Inc. For the Veterans Park Shoreline Restoration Project. This is the first step so that we can continue to grow Veterans Park. Because of the shoreline, we don't want it to erode any further. And this is a restoration project. It's got a combination of funds that go along with it. So there is a 1.5 million dollar NIFWIF, which is National Fish and Wildlife Foundation Grant. There is a Gulf Consortium from a Restore Act contribution, just over 1.5 million dollars. And then T D D funds in the neighborhood of 1.6 million dollars is combined for the execution of this project. This is intended to stabilize the shoreline at Marler, at Marler Park and Veterans Park. So that way it won't erode through continued boat activity and just the course of nature. We have talked with the contractor. They are ready to get to work on this. So once we approve this, we will be able to get to work very, very soon and protect the shoreline at Veterans Park.
This is my district. I'm honored to make this motion finally. I'm so glad we get a second here.
I'll say it.
Thank you. Just a little bit. So much is happening in that park and it's become such a great destination. We're having a, a military event there for three days. Tourist Development Council, it was, it's Yeah, they, I mean, they knocked us out. We had the Center for Lifelong Learning there and they said, no, we've got a military event for the whole park. We're really starting to get a lot of national, you know, observation. So I'm excited about this and getting the shoreline and the continued work of the the path that we're putting in the new statutes that we'll be going in. So thank you very much.
All in favor, signify with a aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. New business. Mr. Austin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. In interpreting the statutory language as it relates to the value adjustment board, the, the composition of that board includes two commissioners. In addition, that statutory guidance indicates that the chairman should be one of the two commissioners that sit on that, that board. So this item before you today is a request for the board to nominate and select one of the two commissioners that sit on the board as the chairman for the upcoming year. Those two commissioners are Commissioner Goodwin and Commissioner Mixon. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. Just so it's known, we had our final meeting yesterday. And Mr. Goodwin does an excellent job chairing that committee. Is there action, Commissioners?
I'll nominate Trey Goodwin to chair that committee.
That's a great nomination.
You have a lot on your plate.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And Trey has extra time.
Yes, sure. Thanks.
Right. Before there's much discussion. All in favor, signify with a aye. That passes unanimously. Have additional public comments? Or anyone from the public desiring to speak at this second shot at public comments? I have no, all right, one speaker card. If you'll bring me your speaker card, please. Thank you. Wade Merritt?
All right. Well, thank y'all for, for doing what you do and thank you for being here today. I want to speak to you about the Inspire Study for a second. I know you're tired of hearing about it, but it's something that, that y'all put in motion. And by doing that, you got a large amount of participation on the north end of the county. Over 4,000 people came and voiced their opinion about the infrastructure and the growth that's taken place in the north end of the county. So I want to bring something to your attention that for every action, there is a reaction, right? So by you implementing the study and the study taking place, it puts something in motion that's in the state statutes. And independent fire districts can change the way they do their impact fees based on that. I'm not sure if you're aware what the average per square foot impact fee is in the state of Florida is $3.83 per square foot. Most of your districts right now is 20 cents for residential, 30 cents, 60 cents. Could you imagine if somebody wanted to come to North Okaloosa County and build a house and have to pay $5 per square foot for an impact fee? How about a developer that comes to the north end of the county? That wants to come into a fire district? And he wants to pay $10,000 per acre just to buy a piece of property to do the development. These are the things that could possibly take place if we don't take some attention to our land development code and our comprehensive plan. Because in order for an independent special fire district to do these type of things and make that change, you have to have a study, which we have, which is the Inspire Study. You have to have an extra amount, well, a lot of growth. So we have a lot of growth in the north end of the county. So that allows state statute. That statute can be where we don't have to do it incrementally. We can go in and have two sessions and then we can wait 90 days and we can implement this. So do you really and truly want to curve growth in that way? Because what's happening is the north end of the county can't keep up with the growth. And since this Board of County Commissioners doesn't seem to want to address the issue that 4,000 people want to see something done, which is the constituents which voted you in. Something has to give. It's being put into the hand of the state entities, which are the independent special fire districts to have to make some hard decisions. And it doesn't just affect the people within the district, but people that want to move into these districts. So please look at the Inspire Study. Do not table it. We all know that there needs to be a major change within our land development code and comprehensive plan to address the growth. So it's up to you to do it. If not, the independent special fire districts do have an opportunity to do that. And that goes for solar fields. That goes for a tremendous amount of things that can all be addressed with that state statute. And because of the Inspire Study, you give us a tool. You give everybody a tool. So just, just, just look into it and please listen to the constituents within the county, which voiced their opinion to get your help. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Merritt, we are listening. Okay, that, that Inspire Study is not on a shelf for all time. Okay? Just give us some time. We're working on it. Trust me. Okay, it's going, it's happening. I'm, I'm absolutely positive. In the next year, we will see it addressed.
Just please let the, the community know, which draws
I'm only one voice, but we will. It's not, it's not going to be a secret or anything.
See anyone else from the public desiring to speak? Okay. We'll close public comment and Commissioners Minute. Commissioner Cox?
I just wanted to speak again to Jason Autry's willingness to meet with me and F dot. I, I want to give tremendous praise for that. I know it's a very, very busy schedule and to, to you our citizens, just know that your transportation ease and fluidity in this county is my top priority. It's what I ran on. It's the ugliest thing you could possibly run on. Nobody really is all that excited about transportation with a growth study out there, but, but that's my commitment to you and I'm going to keep working on it. Just know that, that we're hitting the ground running where that is concerned. And to my fellow Commissioners, I appreciate the fact that we seem to be able to hold it together in such a fashion that the other counties looking on, including the, the entities that are, you know, sort of in charge of so, so many other counties like F dot are applauding us for the ability to, not only to receive feedback from our constituents in an amiable fashion, but also to be able to get along with each other in order to make those, that feedback and those comments work for you, our citizens. So I appreciate all of that. I appreciate you for coming and telling us what you need and what you want. And I appreciate my fellow Commissioners for being able to work together to march those orders through. And that's all I had.
Mr. Goodwin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a, a, a couple of things. First, I wouldn't plan on doing this, but I do want to just speak very briefly about the the Inspire Study and the north planning issue. You know, Mr. Merritt, I understand that the concern about wanting to see, you know, a fast action out of the Board of County Commissioners, but I'll tell you the reason I'm proceeding with caution. One, Inspire's, Inspire's product is really two part. One, it's a data gathering and data delivery. Two, it's a recommended, you know, program to implement. Their data gathering was good and I think we ascertained value from, from that. So I think the money was reasonably spent to gain that data. But I am not convinced that their recommended solution is going to be as beneficial to this community as proposed. And I'll tell you why. Those yellow circles that tend to populate on that plan around the Crestview City Center. My deep fear is that if we press density so heavily into that area, we're going to take the Crestview traffic problem and we're going to exponentially make it worse. And I really feel like traffic is one of the things that is the, the bane of many citizens' existence in North Okaloosa. The traffic is unbearable. So we cannot, we've got to be careful that we don't inadvertently turn around and make, make that a, you know, many times worse. And I'm very fearful of that. I think there's other ways to take the data and implement changes, which I think this board agrees changes need to be made. But if we just, if we just say, hey, look, here's a ready-made plan. And I'm going to be honest with you, that part of the Inspire Plan isn't unique. That part of the Inspire Plan is canned. And if we just take a canned plan and dump it on Okaloosa, Inspire is gone. But we're going to have to live with it. And I don't want to do that to us because I'm one of y'all. We live here. We want to get it right. And I think that's so important. But please understand, you know, your, you know, tenacity in staying after us to do something, that's justified. Don't let it get pushed behind other issues. We got, we have so many things we're dealing with that unintentionally, it's easy to let something go on the back burner while something else bubbles up to the top. So I, doesn't I appreciate you coming and reminding us. I just wanted to take the opportunity to say I'm not ignoring you, but I'm not just going to adopt the Inspire Plan as is because I think it might have an unintended consequence that we just can't live with. That's all.
Well, I want to say something. I wasn't asking you to adopt it. I'm just asking you to look at it, consider it. Look at all the elements that are within that study. And just be sure that you do realize that the people did have an input in what that was. So I, I, I definitely agree that there's a lot going on and it's very complex. It absolutely is. And just remember too, when we build a bypass to fix traffic, let's try not to stack more stuff on it. Just for growth and for money and other developers to make money. Because if you make a road that's supposed to be a quick road around Crestview, putting a lot of other stuff on it's only going to hinder the problem we're trying to help.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So in, in, in my extended minute, Mr. Chairman, if I could just address two other things, and again, I didn't mean to address that, but I just, I felt like I, I owed it to the folks that keep, that come and talk to us to, to speak to that. One, my next item. I've, I've shared a copy of an ordinance that the city of Fort Walton Beach adopted. I've shared that with Ms. Hoshahara. I obviously can't send it to y'all, but you can get it from her. It relates to commercial bus stops. And there's been an issue in the city of Fort Walton. Many of you are probably familiar with the bus stop in Fort Walton that was there since probably the 1950s. It's now a restaurant, very neat place, but it doesn't, doesn't service buses anymore. The buses had been, had made a stop at a, at a gas station convenience store that's actually real close to Eliza Jackson Park, very close to Edwin's Elementary and Fort Walton Beach High School. It's in the city limits. They turned that into a de facto bus stop. My understanding is the routes for the commercial buses, they'd come down I 10. They'd loop down to drop off folks probably from New Orleans and other places at that gas station in the city and then go back up to I 10 and keep on their way. Nobody else, in my understanding in our local, you know, up in the Panhandle has Highway 98 stopped. There was that one. It was a real problem. Parents were complaining to the city, hypodermic needles all over the place. It wasn't really necessarily the best influx of, of visitors to our area coming off the buses. However, now the city is clamping down on that with their new ordinance. There is a serious concern that it will just move to unincorporated Okaloosa. And so I would hope that maybe we can look at a way to, you know, kind of leverage what the city of Fort Walton's done. And I've asked the county attorney to take a look at it. And the reason I bring it up, if we could have some consensus, just so she knows she's not wasting her time. To, to take a look at that. I'm not saying that I have an answer, but I'm just asking for her guidance based on what the city's done. And I'll represent to you, I'm willing to also go and reach out if we go in that direction as a board. And, and that's the direction we go. I'm, I'm willing to go reach out to the city of Mariestra and see if they'll consider the same things that we have a unified front on that. I just worry about the impact to our, to our community. It's been a seriously negative impact in Fort Walton, and it's really upset a lot of the parents with the students at those schools close by. And we don't want to just move it somewhere else. So, you know, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if it's, you know, I guess as long as nobody objects to it, maybe Ms. Hoshahara can take a look at that.
That'd be great.
And then my last issue is I've asked Ms. Hoshahara to look at a policy resolution to kind of formalize how the board looks at major assets within our community. Either, either assets that we own or assets that are of such significance to our constituents and to our county that they're really, you know, a, a basically countywide impact, maybe even regional impact. I'll give you an example. You know, take something like from, that, that physically exists in District Four, Hurlbert Field. You know, that is such a significant, significant economic driver in our community. I, it, it's equally as important to people that live in multiple districts, I believe. And so what goes And so what goes on at Hurlbert is not just a, you know, it's not just an issue that's important to me. I think it's important to all five of us and all our constituents. And I think we have several assets like that. Um, you know, for instance, the, uh, the administrative building in Shalimar, um, you know, that's in one district. But my goodness, that serves people from all the districts. In fact, our offices are in there. And so I asked Ms. Hoshahara if she could look at a, a potential, um, resolution, uh, just to talk about how the board identifies these things of countywide impact and that they're, you know, distinguished from, say, for instance, you know, a community basketball court, maybe in a neighborhood in my district or sidewalk project in a neighborhood and, in a, in a particular district, might be a really a community district-based issue. But these bigger things, um, anyway, I've asked her to look at that, um, and, and I think she may have even kind of, uh, you know, roughed something up just, uh, as an idea, you know, kind of a policy with a, maybe a non-exclusive list of those things that we think are that important. And like I said, you know, just thinking things like the Hurlbert, the Artificial Reef Program, for instance, um, you know, it's not just a Destin issue. It's an all of us issue. Um, but, uh, you know, I was hoping that maybe the board would have some consensus to let her kind of look at that and bring something back, if that would be acceptable.
Sure. I'd be in favor of that being an agenda item in the future.
Okay.
So consensus.
Yes, yes and no. I will say that a lot of those big assets are in my district. And there's been a history of the District Two Commissioner overseeing those. So I feel a little like you're infringing. I mean, you've got Hurlbert in yours and I've got Eglon in mine. And so, I mean, I don't care about the administration building, but a couple of those things like the fairgrounds and some of those, I feel ownership in that because I was the one who went and sought that from the city of Fort Walton. So, uh, when that happened, actually, I was the first one to bring it to John Hofstadt and said, they're going to sell it. Let's get this, you know, in my, let's buy it and keep it so that we can always have it for a hurricane. But, you know, there's plenty of work to go around. So, uh, take a look at it.
Well, I, I, I'll second it because Commissioner Cox made a motion and I guess that's a motion to, to hear it and then to approve it. So I don't know if we need to have a motion to hear.
So if we're going to do that, Commissioner Cox, would you mind hitting your speak button when you say things? I'm sorry, I can't, can't hear you from here without it, but we'll need to, um, have a motion to walk an item on and a super majority, um, in favor and then be able to hear an item to make a motion to agenda item in the future. Sounds very confusing, but that's a, I believe to be.
Motion to walk the item on.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, signify with a I?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Now, what was the motion that you had to state?
Motion to walk the item on and.
Okay.
But it, it, uh, my understanding was it was just a motion to, um, to direct the county attorney to look at the resolution of, uh, about countywide assets and to bring it back at a future date for consideration.
Okay. And so we'll make this an item on the agenda in the near future, brought by the county attorney's office to be able to discuss these assets.
I understand that we're moving to, to put this on the county agenda for further consideration. Yes.
Yes.
And, and, uh, a vote at a future, future date, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And we had mixed, just, just to clear that, that you're on the same thought as I am, uh, we had, uh, mixed consensus. And so if all five of us are in consensus, then no, no problem. We'll move forward. Walking it on, uh, brings it about officially that we can hear it in the future and, and that we're all in favor of, of moving in that direction. Or at least majority. Okay.
Do you do the vote, Mr. Chairman?
I believe we do need to vote. We voted to bring it on. As soon as I, we're voting to make this an agenda item in the future to task Ms. Hoshahara with bringing forward the information so that we can be discussed and action can be taken. All in favor, signify with a I?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right. Um, Commissioner Ketchum with your Commissioner Minute.
So I'm going to use my Commissioner Minute to talk about someone who's been a valued partner on this dais. Um, you've done a lot for, I'm talking about the chairman, for staff appreciation luncheons, and we thank you for that. Uh, public safety, you brought a wealth of knowledge and we thank you for all of that. You've been a champion for affordable housing and we're so grateful. And with that, we'd like to present you with a plaque that we could have done last time for being the chairman and now being the chairman again. So.
A picture? Okay. Thank you. Sure. It's got a T in it. Mr. Palmer, you said picture and I've never seen Mr. Hofstadt move as fast. It's a good time. Mr. Palmer, you have a, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to, uh, thank you, Chairman. Um, I just wanted to take my Commissioners Minute and just, uh, recognize that while I was building a snowman last week, we had, uh, dozens and dozens of county employees who were, uh, working hard to keep the county services, uh, moving and everything, um, that are just the critical services for the county. Um, so I, I, I was approached about, um, a particular employee who did, you know, just an outstanding thing that ended up having, um, you know, just outsized impact for, you know, it's just for what, uh, one person would normally do. And, and as I was going to, you know, look at recognizing, uh, that employee, I started asking questions about, well, you know, who else sort of did, you know, just Herculean efforts during this, uh, unprecedented snowstorm? And it just turns out we have just dozens and dozens of employees who stepped up. And, and so it wouldn't be appropriate to call out one person. Uh, but I just wanted to take this minute to, uh, recognize that the dozens and dozens of employees, um, who just stepped up. And I know that, you know, all of the shifts at the, at the jail, for example, was, were fully staffed and they kept those services going. Um, they had, uh, there were, there was an employee who had to be brought in, uh, on a four-wheel drive, uh, county vehicle just to work their shift. There was an employee who got stuck in, uh, five hours of traffic going home after a 12-hour shift and then came back in the next day to work their next shift as well. Um, there was an employee who, or there were several employees who helped fix, uh, burst water pipes and leaks and things like that, that kept some of our buildings open. And, uh, and then, and then, you know, even our adjacent services, uh, the tax collector's office in, um, in Niceville was, was able to open on Friday, which when it's been closed all week, it had triple the amount of, of business that day. And the only reason that it was able to open was because county employees fixed pipes, uh, that kept it open. So I just wanted to take this minute to just say, you know, how thankful I am. Uh, I enjoyed building a snowman and snow angels and all of that stuff, but they were doing some very, very important work during that time. And I just wanted to, uh, just say how much I appreciate the county employees for doing that. Thank you.
Now finish with, um, my Commissioner Minute. Commissioner Cox, the, the reason it was so successful, uh, DOT is because of the relationships that we have and their longstanding and it's, it's great. Um, we have questions come from neighboring counties. We've started recently having questions coming from across the state, um, South Florida, asking about some of the attention we've been getting and, and really the unheard of idea of taking money to them, not, not just asking with our hand out. And so that has been a, a huge impact, um, coming in as partners. So to say that in, in parallel with Mr. Goodwin's statement, it excites me now to drive south on 85 to see the work that's happening for the future expansion there and to know that unprecedentedly, we have a county buy-in that's, that it's really unheard of in the process of there to, to take $10 million and say, we will partner with you, um, come fix your road. And to see that now, um, I know during our snow days, which some may think you've heard negative tones on that, it's not. That was exciting. What a great time in our community to, uh, to experience snow. So many people had never seen snow and you got to see that much here. Now I'm okay that it's gone and I'm okay that it's not something we live with all the time. But for once in, uh, in my decades of living here, to be able to have that, um, what a great opportunity. But I believe it does speak volumes to, to know the, the extent that our employees went to be able to accomplish the task. And, uh, just to be able to see how partnerships, even in that instance, uh, Mr. Maddox was able to call some of our partners and get a, a more forward response than, than we would have had it just been, uh, very rigid relationships. But we have, uh, we have great depths of relationships in this. So with that, I'll adjourn the meeting.